The Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board, Monday, October 3rd, 2022. It is 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Yeah.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Weiser.
Hello.
Our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano. You're here?
Here.
There you are. And board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
All right. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic which is ten one nation, underground, individual, liberty, and justice.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this board on anything that is not on our current agenda? Hearing and seeing none. We have several items here beforehand. The meeting calendar. Has everybody had a chance to look at the meeting schedule? Any questions or any thoughts on it? Is there a motion to approve the meeting schedule as presented? I mean, we can cancel or change a few things later if that's necessary, but if... So moved. All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We have a series of resolutions. We've got... Let me make sure I've got the list. We've got 22:520, Fred Stringham. 22:526, White Cap LP. 22:504, Taco Bell. And that's it. Okay.
22:520 and 519 are both minor site plan... Or, sorry, the minor committee.
All right. With the two minor site plans, Chairman, would you lead the minor site planning?
Yes, sure. All right. So that'd be Resolution 22:519. Do we have a motion to...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move the motion to approve application number 22:519, Troy Hills Village, 1480 Route 46, Block 718, Lot 12. Minor site plan for installation of a playground area, fencing, walkway, picnic area, and parking.
Thank you, Mr. Didich. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mealy.
I'm sorry. You can have it, Dominic.
Okay.
All right. Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. Okay. The second item is Application 22:520. Do we have a motion?
526.
526? Yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, I remember what 521. Okay. 526, White Cap LP. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve the resolution for application number 22.526, White Cap LP, 799 Edwards Road, Block 767, Lot 12, Zone LIW-2, Minor Site Plan to Construct an Outdoor Storage Area and Parking Stalls.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, Didich.
Okay. Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. Okay. Nora, does that conclude the minor committee?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, sir.
Now, we'll entertain motions to approve an application number 22:520, Fred Stringham.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve application number 22:520, Fred Stringham, 19 Long Ridge Road, Block 4, Lot 20, Major Soil Moving Permit for an In Ground Pool and Patio.
Do I hear a second?
I cannot vote for that one.
I'll second. All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Stansiel.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. Moving on, Application number 22:504, Taco Bell. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve the resolution for application number 22.504, Taco Bell, 285 Route 46, Block 767, Lot 3.01. Preliminary and final major site plan, C variants, conditional use, and major soil moving permit to construct a Taco Bell drive-through restaurant.
Do we have a second?
Second, Didich.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Stansiel.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right. Now, moving right along with things. Let me get my... I do with that. All right. What we're going to do here is we're going to go right to the other business. Investigation of property identified as Block 737, Lot 3, located at 249 Palmeroy Road to determine whether it should be declared a non... Okay. A non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. All right.
Would you like some explanation?
Yes, we'd love it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On August 16th, the governing body Township Council adopted Resolution R 2022-124, which directs the planning board to conduct an investigation and make a recommendation to determine... Hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to determine whether the lot, in this case, it's Block 737, Lot 3, 249 Palmeroy Road qualifies under the redevelopment law as being in need of redevelopment. You, as the planning board, under the statute, the redevelopment law, are required to do the investigation, hold the public... You, as the planning board, do the investigation, hold the public hearing, and then make a recommendation. Council does the formal designation. So, the resolution... The action that's going to be... That's being asked of the planning board this evening is to simply accept the designate... Or, the direction from the governing body, assign our office to do the work, and then we will come back with our report. We are in the process now of putting together a formal proposal to the governing body to actually fund the work, but you do need to direct us to do it.
All right. Does that... Council, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, that's correct. The planning board conducts the area need study and holds a public hearing, and then their rise... The board's recommendations are sent to the council to then make the final determination, and the council can either agree with the planning board or take exception and make their own decision.
Okay. We have a councilman here with us who might...
And I've done this many times.
Who might give us some insight as to what is... What our planners indicated, what you believe to be correct.
Yeah, we don't have the details of it yet. We're going to wait for the report. So, it's up to the planner to make a recommendation that we can see.
So, this is... Just to round this out, and I'm... I was directed by Nora to be quick, so I'm going to try to be quick. There are eight criteria under the redevelopment law that a property can qualify under for being in need of redevelopment. The... What we're being asked to do, what we would be asked to do, is to... Is simply an existing conditions analysis that describes the property and then speaks to which of the eight criteria it would qualify under and make a recommendation to you as the planning board. You accept it, modify it, reject it, whatever, make your recommendation to the governing body. So, all this is, is an existing conditions analysis. I think it is important to note that this is directed as a non-condemnation area in need of rehabilitation or redevelopment study, so eminent domain would not be in play.
And most likely, it'll end up with overlay zoning, existing in whatever is proposed, which we've done before.
Okay. Are there any members of the planning board who would like to ask questions of this? Mr. Napolitano?
Yeah, I know. I mean, what can it be? It'd be housing? Could it be an industry? Could it be a school? Like, what can it be?
We have not been asked to render any kind of opinion on that. It's my understanding that it would be warehouse-type uses, which is not dissimilar to what's out there now, but we have only been asked to submit a proposal as relates to the investigation, not the creation of the redevelopment plan.
Corporations have changed. Offices have changed. We're way downsizing now of office space, and so we have vacant properties throughout the town that are not making revenue and not serving the township properly. So, this is what we would study and probably do a dual overlay zoning so they... Something else could be proposed there.
I think those are details we'll find out in the investigation. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Any other members of the council that have any... Mr. Mayor, do you have any?
Yes, I'm in favor of moving forward with this process with regard to this property, Palmeroy Road, although I'm not at... To really speak further on it, but I think this would be good for the township, and I think we should do the study. Go back to the Township Council and hopefully they approve it.
All right. Do I have a motion approving the recommendation to the council, I guess it is?
This is just to permit the planner to do the study.
To do the study. We're... But the council would then...
We're authorizing the planner to do the study.
Yes.
That's all we're doing right now.
That's all we're doing.
Just directing us to do it pending, I guess, funding and approval from the funders.
All right. Do I have a motion to that effect from...
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to authorize our planner to do a study of the 249 Palmeroy Road property.
Second.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Stansiel.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Good though. All right. Now, we can move on to the regular agenda of this evening's meeting, and we've finished the resolution. We've finished that. So, in our agenda tonight, we start with One Campus Associates, application number 22:534, Three Campus Drive as well, Major Soil Permit in conjunction with previously approved application for a multifamily development.
Good evening, everyone. This is Dr. James Dean, senior morro, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Tom Golden. You've seen us before. You saw us through town election here on a similar project on a different piece of land in the same campus, and the only thing that's before you tonight is a soil movement application and a recommendation from you so that we can... We see you do all of that, you plan the site plan, you finish up the job. But it's good in a nutshell. We did get a report from your engineer, who is a grown-up and can put words in his own mouth. Didn't seem like we had a particular problem with anything you're doing. He reminded us that we needed some additional permits, which we are very well aware of, and we would just like a favorable recommendation so we can keep on moving down the road.
All right. Are you going to present any...
I wasn't going to, but...
No?
He's old-dressed up, but I don't know that there's really any need to, but if you want, I'm happy to have Tom put a couple of things on, but I didn't know that it was necessary. Whatever you would like, sir.
I would like to ask my professionals what they would like to hear so that we made a sufficient record to say that we did our jobs here and we're earning our pay.
We're already earning it.
Mr. Chairman, I will go very quickly and say, as a soil moving permit, it's all engineering. We have no planning-related comments whatsoever.
All right. And we have an engineer down...
Yeah, so the biggest question we've always asked is the route. You know, what route are you taking out?
You're honest with Tom. I knew we couldn't get away with that.
That's the biggest.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Thomas Golden, G-O-L-D-E-N, Vice President of Development at Verus Residential, formerly Matt Kelly. The address is Harborside 3, 210 Hudson Street, Suite 400, Jersey City, New Jersey, 07311. Tom, you testified before this twenty-four. You're also a licensed professional plant and saving jersey, and your license is... Is that all correct? Yes. All right. So, you heard the question. What route... What routes are our trucks going to? This is Three Campus. It's a vacant property that joins the JF headquarters property. It's approved by this board for 238 units and a garage. Across the street, Two Campus, if you've gone by this scene, we started demolition of the building. That was approved. We came to you, and you approved a soil moving permit for that. We told the board then, and we're going to tell you tonight, that the route is going to be Campus to Drive to 10. Nothing on Littleton. And then from 10, they'll go to... More than likely, they're going to go to 287 north or south. Same route, though, that we told the board on 2, and we're telling you for 3. Same route.
Thank you. And then I might as well ask the when's anticipated start, and then how long a duration for soil movement?
Well, we still have... We have to... This has to go once this is a major, has to go to governing body for approval because it's a major soil moving permit. We have our developers' agreement and our stormwater agreement, which are just approved by Mr. Lavery, who was going to send them up to Township Council for hopefully approval of those. I have a trebleable permit. Obviously, I have to post all my bonds and my keys, so I'm thinking that we'd be hopefully in a position by year's end to have everything in place. Construction on a project like this is going to take 24 months, maybe a little longer. We have to build the garage as well as the building, so if it... You know, if it gets all done, ninety... Not optimistic you get done and get started before year's end if winter comes, so it could probably be a spring start.
Any... Do you have any trucks? Truckloads?
On the import... We're reporting there's... Most of the movement in the permit is cut till on-site, so you're cutting here and you're filling there. There is probably over the course of the year, a few hundred trucks over the course of the job, but that will be sort of spread out. You're going to have Phil brought in to sort of grade the site. As you build, you'll be doing that, so it'll be probably more in the first year, so I got to imagine a few hundred, not thousands, by any stretch of the imagination. No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Math, you have a...
Given the traffic in the area, would you be open to restricting it to not... To not move soil before 9:00 AM?
We've typically... We, you know, generally with engineering, the average, we've always generally told him is basically from 7 to 4. You know, we can probably push that back a little bit. Pushing it back to 9 gets a little... These guys start... Remember, this is in the campus, so it's not like we're going to be serving neighbors. It's in the campus, you know, it's several hundred feet in from Littleton, so it's not that to be a... I'd be loathe to say I'd like to have them come in at 9. That's sort of crazy. They're cutting that period down from 9 to 3.
I was more...
And they're going to put the back end in the rush hour.
Yeah, I was more concerned about the actual movement of trucks rather than activity on-site.
Well, they'll be... I mean, once they start, they're going to start, so I... If I push them back, I'm going to push them into the afternoon rush, so I'd rather try and maintain the schedule that we've generally done, and we've been here a long time. I don't think we've had any complaints from Justin's office or Mike before them that, you know, that's been a problem, but I'd like to try to keep to that if we can.
All right. Understood. Thank you.
I have no problem with it because it's all commercial property. There's no residential that are any concerned about the noise.
And we're not... We can't... We're not going on Littleton.
Exactly.
So, taking them and going down the street, going past Seven Campus, go past Seven Campus, and you hit drive. Drive, and you're out. You pass the 2-Hill, which is going to be a warehouse.
Yep.
Not really any real issues.
Any...
Yeah, just to add to that, right? So, I think to Matt's point, there's a lot of traffic going into 287 from 10, north or south, around between 7:00, 8:00, even up to 9:00 AM. I think that's what he was having, so good trucks going out could be delayed as much as possible, I guess.
Yeah. I, like I said, they generally, you know, you 7:00 o'clock, you get going, whoever.
Yeah.
Nobody's running a truck out at 7:00 or 8:00.
Yeah. As the point was made, though, we're simply recommending to the council, and they can make that, if that's a concern to the council.
Yeah.
Council has to agree because it's a major, and we'll be more than 400, keep it going. The other thing is, we are really only able to work with the council. We have been with the council great, so...
At 200... 200 trucks spread out over a year or more than a year is not a big load.
It's a road... I think it's a detail that's right. It's a road for a small operation.
Right. Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr...
Yes. So, the calculations provided here are based off of the site plan that was approved, and there's no changes to that whatsoever?
We actually have a resolution of plans planned, signed by the board, or signed by the chairman, which was just reached probably in the last month or two. We got them from you. So, what the board approved, and we revised. Mr. Canjiano's office approved it. Your wife's office approved it. So, we actually have signed site plans, and that's what the numbers are based on.
All right. Great.
All right. Are there any members of the public to ask... Wish to ask any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Is there anybody else? Any of our professionals have any further comments? All right. Any members of the public have any wish to speak in opposition to this or in favor of this? Hearing and seeing none. Close the evidentiary portion of the meeting here, the hearing here. Is there someone willing to make a motion that we recommend to the council that they consider allowing a major soil moving permit for this particular application?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Didich?
A motion to approve application number 22:534, One Campus Associates, Three Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.12, Major Soil Moving Permit in conjunction with previously approved application for multifamily development.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mealy.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Stansiel.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Welcome. All right. Moving to the next item on our agenda is Jasmine Polanco for Mohawk Avenue, Block 548, Lot 6, Minor Site Plan with C variants for a two-lot subdivision, lot line revision.
Good evening.
Yes.
My name is Robert Wong. I represent the applicant. Actually, there's four applicants. Jasmine Polanco, witness tonight, her husband William Flagley, and the adjoining neighbors that have a dealer family. I can't pronounce their first names very well.
Okay.
So, and this is a basically a battery line adjustment because of the application. Want to swear to witness, or...
Um, yes. You please raise your right hand. You don't have to stand.
Oh, okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Jasmine Polanco, P-O-L-A-N-C-O. My address is 4 Mohawk Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. Jasmine, you and Phil own 4 Mohawk Avenue.
Do we have any waivers that we need?
And your neighbors, the back, dealers, own 2 Mohawk Avenue.
Correct.
And that adjoins your property. And tell the board what you're proposing to do.
So, what we're proposing to do is to make a lot that conforms to the town standards and also just have a square, bit larger backyard for our equipment and our dog.
And this will involve a swamp of land with your neighbor? Then, the practical aspect of this is your property is gaining quite a bit of property, correct? And that will become a conforming lot.
Right.
And your neighbor, you're giving a small, triangular piece of your property to them, which will then make basically their lot and your lot more of a thing.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the planner has, and the engineer have raised, asked some questions about the...
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Have they asked some questions about the sheds? Okay. So, now, there's... Could you describe the sheds that are on your property and adjoining your property?
Yes. So, there is one shed that belongs to our neighbor on 111 Lake Shore Drive. That shed belongs to Sue and Nick Edwards. The other shed actually was on our property when we purchased the house. It was there.
Okay. So, there's three sheds in question, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And let me just... Okay. So, there's a shed that joins Lot 4, correct? Okay, so, there's a shed that joins lot four, correct? That's, that's your shed?
Correct.
Okay, and that shed is right along the boundary line?
Correct.
And that, that was there when you purchased the property?
Correct.
Alright, then the shed that is in the area of the deck, your neigh, and that's your neighbor's shed that over, goes over your property line by about a foot?
Right.
Okay, was that there when you purchased your property?
Yes.
And when did you purchase your property?
Um, 2014.
Okay, and then there's another shed, a smaller shed, that's right along the boundary line, that's your neighbor's shed?
That's also Sue and Nick Edwards, yeah.
Okay.
111.
Okay, and the other small issue is, you have, you have a concrete fireplace that is .4 tenths of a foot over your boundary line?
Yes.
Okay, and was that existing when you purchased the property in 2014? Now, are you proposing to do anything with respect to the sheds?
No.
Okay, and you'd like the board to just allow you to leave the sheds the way they are?
Yes, um, we don't want to cause our neighbors to distort. I don't know for how many years those things were there, but just from like living there and looking at them, it's like, you know, they're using it. So, I wouldn't want to make them, you know, uncomfortable by changing something that was probably there.
Okay. And the boundary line relocation actually is on the opposite side of your property from the sheds?
Correct.
Okay. The engineer has asked, will there be any trees affected by the relocation of the boundary line?
No.
I think we've addressed, the engineer has raised a couple of questions about the plan, revisions of it, and I think items two, three, and four. We're okay with that, we weren't able to accomplish it in time for tonight's meeting, primarily because we're having trouble locating the neighbor's sewer lines. We'll get that done, but it's just, it's taken a little more time than usual. The town had the records for my clients, or the Polanco's boundary, waterline and sewer, but they didn't have, they didn't have it for the sewer for the neighbor, so we got to figure that out. But we're, we're agreeable to having the plan approved subject to compliance with items two, three, and four of the planners, of the engineers' report. I think, I think as far as testimony, we've, we've addressed all of the issues. Do you want me to just run, oh, I'm sorry?
Just number one there, are you going to be filing by deed, or are you submitting a map?
I was going to ask you guys, what you think's the best way here? Well, I'd rather do deed, but...
You're allowed to do both.
I'd rather do a deed, I think.
Okay.
Okay. The, um, and do you want me to just run through the variances a second?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so, so there's a variance for the entranceway, because it's 22 feet from the street, and it's supposed to be 25 feet. Uh, that's, that, we're not proposing to do anything with the entranceway, it's just that it's an existing condition that, it's just an existing condition. The...
And what you're doing today, it doesn't affect it whatsoever?
Has no impact on it at all. The relocation of the boundary line created a bit of a, it created the need for another variance. Where the boundary line is, right now, there was no need for rear yard variances. When we relocated it, the, there's a little triangular piece to the neighbor's property, that's lot four, that comes into our property, and that then became the rear yard, and so, and that's 17.6 feet where it's 20 feet is required. So, that's, that's basically an existing condition that only happens because we're relocating the line, but the actual relocation of the line, I believe everybody will agree, is brings the property into much greater conformance with the zoning ordinance than than not relocating it. But that, that, we're not creating that, it's just that by definition, the rear yard changed apparently, okay? With respect to the other variances, there's one for the shed, it's, it's supposed to be 10 feet, zero, it currently, it's zero. We're not really proposing anything, we're just saying, leave it the way it is. The concrete fireplace, again, is .4 tenths over the boundary line, we'd like, that's an existing condition. Our proposal, our project has nothing to do with it, so we'd like to leave that the way it is. And the same with the shed that encroaches about a foot onto our property, that's the neighbor's shed, we have no objection to it being where it's at, and, and what we're proposing tonight has nothing to do with it. So, we'd like to ask the board to grant those five variances. I know it seems like a lot, but they're very technical in nature. And I, I don't think I have anything else unless the board has a question.
I guess this might be a question for, for one of our professionals, but are the variances for the sheds necessary, or are those, because if the, if in the future the sheds need to be replaced, is that something where we want to review that again?
Well, my concern, you know, we called out the situation, and obviously it's up to the board as to how they want to address it. My only concern is that we don't put ourselves into a situation where the board down the line is somehow or another held liable for an approval for an improvement, either improvement that's not part of this app, that's on a lot that's not part of this application, or an approval for a, for an improvement that's part of this application that's on a lot that's not part of this application. So, if, you know, we have always asked whether it's, and the board may recall, whether it's fences, or in this case sheds, that belong to somebody else but are on the property that's part of the application, that it be addressed. We are always of the opinion that it should be moved, but recognize that can be a hardship on people, so I will defer to the board and to council on how to deal with that.
Can I ask that question a different way? If we approve this tonight, and the neighbor decides they want to take down the old cruddy shed and put up a nice brand new one, that, do we, are we doing anything to interfere with that purpose?
I would say that, to the extent that any, any new improvements, whether it's the shed or the fence, that we, we maybe should condition those improvements to be located in accordance with...
The setbacks.
The setbacks on the appropriate properties, because otherwise, they will have to come back here.
That's why I was raising that question.
No, it's a very good... Thank you.
I, I would say as a, you know, a homeowner in the, in the town, and, you know, you constantly see this, you buy a house, there's sheds there, and, you know, 99.9% of the time, the problem was not the proper permits or setbacks done, and I, I would look at it as, as long as it's deemed not a nuisance to the existing neighbors, then so be it. If they want to put up a new structure, then I think it should fall underneath the proper guidelines when they put up a new structure.
That's all I was going to...
Just to make sure I understand, I think if, if the neighbor came in and wanted to replace the shed, they'd have to get a permit, then they'd have to get a variance to put it wherever they want, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not affecting that in any way?
No.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's also the, the shed that is on your property, which is too close to your neighbor's property. If we're, if we're looking at the number four dwelling?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, that shed in the back is, is not following correct setbacks either.
That's correct, I understand that, yep.
If they built a new one, they would have to have the proper setback.
Yes, and the, the same thing with the fence.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I'm glad Mr. Weiser brought that up, I, I forgot to address the fence, but our concern about the fence is basically the same as with the sheds. The existing fences along the boundary lines meander a little over, a little under the boundary line, and we'd like the board to allow them just to remain where, where they're at for neighborhood peace, basically.
That makes sense to me.
Yep. As long as the board does not object to it, and there's no neighbor coming out to object to it, everybody apparently is fine with the current situation, I, like I said, I, I just wanted to make sure there's no unintended consequences down there.
Now, the only thing that I foresee is the possibility that down the road, somebody, other people who owned these properties at that time get upset about it for some reason or another, and so, I just want to make sure that whatever we do here provides them with a plan of how it would be resolved without having to resort to, you know, so the idea that if the shed is going to be improved or rebuilt, they have to meet the, the proper setback standards, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
So...
I just had one, so, the existing conditions can continue, but the board isn't going to give the stamp of approval, like for the concrete fireplace that goes over the edge, but those conditions can continue to be in place until something new is constructed, or if the neighbor wants to construct something, then things might have to change.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just one quick question, who owns the fence, which, which dwelling? Is it your fence, or is it, does the Lake Shore homeowner?
We both do.
You, you both do?
So, it's like, they own like half of it, and then when we purchased the house, the other half of it is there. So, it's like...
Somebody put the funds up.
We didn't, we didn't purchase, build any fences, and, you know, I'm sure you all realize, it's a lot, once properties change hands a few times, nobody knows who owns the fence usually.
Who built the fence, okay. Who built it, okay.
Okay, do our professionals know how they would write up this resolution for us so that we approve this application?
I, I think what, from my perspective, what council said, and the way she described it, is perfect.
So, just let me say one thing here, because the shit thing's getting to me. Who owns the sheds? I mean, when you, with, with these property lines, when you, because it sounds like you're swapping land, that's what you said in the beginning.
Well, it has nothing to do with this side of the property, so the one shed that's next to lot four is my client's shed. The shed that's on, that encroaches a little bit on their property owns the lot one, but actually both those sheds, the ones along the boundary line, but within the setback. What we're dealing with is basically the, the yard that's divided between lot six and lot 16, which doesn't affect any improvements, strictly just baking, baking your, yard.
Okay.
Yeah, all of the pre-existing conditions are unaffected by the, by the lot line change.
That's correct.
So, that, you know...
Fine.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Palatano?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, okay, so, are the, you are, you're at four or two?
We're at four.
You're four. So, your impervious coverage is going to, I guess you could say, decrease, and then the neighbor number two is going to drastically increase, so they're going to run out of space to like build, I don't know, they want to put a pool in, they're going to go over their coverage. Are they aware that they're losing so much property?
They're, they're, they're aware? They, they approved the plan, they made an agreement to sell the property to us.
Okay.
And they are represented by an attorney.
Alright. You should make sure, they're, they're losing a lot, so they're going to be probably over their percentage, so.
They're losing, we believe.
So, in order for that agreement to be validated, we need to approve this tonight.
So, that, that, we can't, yes, we can't purchase it until, until the subdivisions approve.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, is it, can we make the, can we make this change subject to the actual purchase agreement being executed? So that, kind of, so in case it falls through for some reason, that we aren't necessarily subdividing automatically, if you know what I mean?
Well, the, the way the subdivision would be affected would be the, the deed recordation, so there might be this approval, if the deed never gets recorded, the subdivision never happens.
Perfect, that's, that's what I was concerned about.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, we have just a couple of issues that we recommended be conditions of approval. The first one is on page three of our report, revising the plan to reflect the list updated, that's the 200-foot list. I guess, you're going to do that, okay, and then the next one is on page six of our report. You, can we just have it confirmed that the 39.48 coverage figure includes the paper patio and pathways and all of the impervious?
Hold, hold on a second, I have to write that one down.
Okay, footnote nine on page six of our report.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah.
And I think that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Is that your case?
That's it, thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to, to ask questions of this case, this witness, at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this case at this time? Hearing and seeing none. We can close the evidentiary portion of the proceedings. Any discussions or any other points that people want to make before we go to moving a resolution? Do I have a volunteer to make, move the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, do we have to approve the variances first before the resolution?
Uh, as long as council's okay with it, I think they can do it all at the same time, but...
Um, I would recommend that only the rear yard setback variance be granted, and that the remaining four requested variances just are permitted to remain as non-conforming conditions.
For the useful life, correct? Just the useful life and the improvements.
Yeah, we don't want that coming back later and saying, well, that's not conforming.
One of the variances is for the front entranceway, you know, I, I can't see a circumstance where the, where board would have a problem with them replacing that. And it's an existing, it's an existing condition. It's up, it's part of the house.
We can let that one go.
So, the entryway and the rear yard setback.
Yeah.
There you go. Mr. Mealy, do you have all these, you just want to indicate what...
No, that was just a question, I would defer to someone else for the motion.
Alright, do I have somebody willing to make the motion on this case to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion for, I guess it's application number 21:526, Jasmine Polanco, for Mohawk Avenue, block 548, lot six, minor site plan with C, C variances for a two-lot subdivision, lot line revision, and along with the, a variance for rear yard setback, a variance for, what is it, the front yard, or...
Front yard setback.
Front entrance setback, and, and the, that, the various improvements by the property lines vis-à-vis sheds and concrete, what is it, what is it, con, what is it?
Concrete patio and fences.
Con, but isn't there like a barbecue or something?
It is.
Yeah, concrete barbecue, be allowed to remain, and the fences be allowed to remain for the extent of their useful life.
Do I hear a second?
Second, DeDee.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
DeDee.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Palatano.
Yes.
Denzial.
Yes.
Fonakin.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
But, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm enjoying rain. We haven't had rain in a while. We got rain on Saturday, I went out and cut the grass on Sunday, and it was hard as a rock and dry.
Dusty.
Alright. Oh, moving on to application number 22:530, Alpha Investment LLC, 304 Halsey Road, block 313, lot five, minor site plan for two sublot, two-lot subdivision with C variances.
What's that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Good evening, folks. I see Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mayor Larry Calley, on behalf of the applicant, Alpha Investments LLC. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we'll be relatively brief this evening, we've got a few witnesses to go through, but relatively simple application that I hope the board will appreciate the relief. If you wouldn't mind, before we get started, going through items on completeness, I'd like to briefly frame what we hope to do here this evening with the board, and who you'll hear from shortly. So, the applicant, Alpha Investments LLC, is the owner of a number of properties in the township, and has been developing in the township for a number of years. This is a project at 304 Halsey Road. For the record, it's block 313, lot five, in the R4 zoning district, a single lot there now. It's a significantly oversized lot, it's more than two times the size of what's required in the zone. It's about 14,200 square feet, 6,000 square feet of areas required in the zone. We have the unique fortune of the existing and only house on the property being located on the corner of the property, it's pinched near the corner of Halsey and Elmwood, but there's a large void along Halsey beyond the existing house, and the proposal was to fill that void with another single-family residence. So, it's a lot proposed, total of two, one existing today. So, with the net change going to two lots, the relief is very limited, arguably maybe conforming. The new lot is fully conforming, lot area conforms, coverage conforms, setback conforms, structure size, structure height, there's no density issues, there's no FAR issues, we have the zoning board, if we did have any of those, but it's a fully conforming, newly proposed, two-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling structure on Halsey. The existing structure is proposed to have some interior improvements done, it needs a little bit of TLC, but otherwise, there's not much being proposed for the existing house on the corner, with the exception of a deck. And the question is whether or not the proposed deck requires variance relief or not. If it does, it's about a one-and-a-half foot dimension that we're in the setback. We're proposing 18.6. 20 is required for principal structure, 10 is required for accessory structure, I think there is a little bit of discussion in the board reports as to whether or not relief is even required for that item. But overall, this is largely a conforming minor subdivision to propose a total of two single-family dwelling lots on this very large and oversized property with a big void in it. This evening, Mr. Chairman, members, you're here from three witnesses, you'll hear from our project surveyor, Steve Smith, he'll walk you through the existing layout of the boundaries of the property, as well as the proposed subdivision to two lots. Steve will mention the setbacks, the relief that we received. You'll then hear from our project architect, Keith Chambers. Mr. Chambers has designed a number of houses in the township over the years, we're going to show you a photo of a similar property that our client has developed in the township, which this new structure will mimic here, tonight. Again, the structure is going to be fully conforming on the new lot, no relief required for that at all. And lastly, here from our project planner, we think the relief is slight, Mr. Chairman, members, but notwithstanding that, we have our project planner, Alex Doherty, here tonight with us, and you'll hear from him on the limited items of relief to the minor subdivision that is sought. We've had the benefit of reviewing all the board reports that have issued, we have no items, no issues with any of the items in them, we'll certainly go through all of them. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we can get to our first witness, or we can go through the completeness items if you'd like.
Go through the completeness items here.
Very good. Mr. Weiser, would you like to welcome through your report?
Yes, our report's dated September 20th, 2022, completeness begins on page two of our report. Completeness begins on page two of our report. Unfortunately, we were not able to complete the completeness review within the statutory 45-day period, so it was, the application was deemed administratively complete. Having said that, there are a number of items that, where, are listed as not applicable and we don't take exception to any of those. There is a number of requests for waivers. That's basically page three of our report. We don't take exception to any of the requests for waivers. The only issue we have is on the top of page three, item number 13, as relates to protective covenants and deed restrictions. Are there any protective covenants or deed restrictions existing or proposed as part of this property?
There are none.
There are none. So that issue falls away. So with that, we can recommend, we can recommend completeness.
All right. If, so we don't need to move any waivers?
Well, you know what? You're right. This board does do that. We have waivers listed, I'm sorry, on page three of our report. It's checklist form four. We have waivers for number 13, existing and proposed storm drain design and improvements. Item 14, location discretion of proposed street trees, reforestation and landscaping. Item 15 for traffic study. Item 18 for existing and proposed utility services, including septic and test hole locations. Item 19, storm drain design. That is it. We did go through these with Chaz Holloway of the engineer's office, and he did not object to any of those waivers being granted.
I asked our engineer, Mr. Canjiano, is there anything here that you would need to make your...
No, we reviewed it and as Stuart said, that we have no objection to it, particularly because this is for subdivision only. It has to go back for drainage design and plot plan review. Per municipal land use law, has to go to the township engineering department for review, detailed grading review, detailed drainage review.
Okay. So do I hear a motion approving the waivers outlined in the report as just spoken about by our planner?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, Matt.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. The waivers are granted. Let's move along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first approved witnesses are project surveyor, Stephen Smith.
All right. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record, and provide the board with background on your experience, any licenses, and whether you've appeared before the board before. There's a lot.
Stephen Ira Smith. Last name is very difficult, S-M-I-T-A. Business address is 320 Route 10 West Randolph, New Jersey. I'm the principal of Genuine Engineering Associates. I've been associated with the firm for a little over 50 years. I'm a licensed professional landscier. I license in the state of New Jersey since 1984. Martha, a licensed professional planer, licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1985. My license is current. I have appeared before planning boards, demanding boards of adjustment throughout Bergen, Mills, and Morris County. I have figures in the authority for this board.
Would you pull the microphone closer to you?
Okay. Sorry. He's going to start singing if it gets too close. You don't want him back listening.
As long as he doesn't sing my way.
Mr. Calley actually went through, explained the whole project. I was sitting back there wondering what he was going to leave for me to do. As he indicated, we are here for a minor subdivision for a lot that's at the corner of Elmwood Drive and Halsey Road. Is this one on?
Yes.
Okay. The plans that I have mounted are the ones that have been submitted to the board. There've been no modifications on it. As I indicated, we're at the intersection of Halsey and Elmwood Drive. Now I'm going to flip to sheet two, which is the existing condition plan. As Mr. Calley had indicated, we have one existing single-family dwelling on the property that is towards the easterly side of the property or closest to Elmwood Drive. The lot is 14,212 square feet, which is significantly larger than what your ordinance requires in this zone. We're required 6,000 square feet, so the lot is more than double the size that's needed. That, this plan is labeled existing condition and demolition plan. That what we are proposing to remove is the second driveway that comes off of Elmwood Drive. That is proposed to be removed. The reason that is being removed is to keep the total lot coverage complying with the township ordinance. There is also a block landscape wall that encroaches out into Elmwood Drive. That was an item that was mentioned in the engineer's report, my discussions with his office. We indicated that we would revise the plans to show that that will be removed. Sheet three of the plan is the grading and subdivision plan, which shows the layout of our two proposed lots. We have proposed Lot 5.01, which is the new lot for the proposed new dwelling, which is 7,650 square feet. As Mr. Calley indicated, that the dwelling that we're proposing on the lot will fully comply with the ordinance relative to all of your bulk requirements, your setbacks, building coverage, lot coverage. There was one more specific question that was asked on our general notes regarding the building height. The ordinance permits a maximum height of 35 feet or two-and-a-half stories. We just indicated that it would be less than that. That, went through it with the architect. The proposed dwelling will actually be 25 foot 7 inches or approximately 10 foot less than what the ordinance permits. The next lot is 5.02, which is the corner lot, which contains the existing dwelling. That lot is 6,562 square feet. Again, we comply with the building coverage and the lot coverage. As I indicated earlier, we're removing the, that existing driveway that comes off of Elmwood. Right now, with the driveway removed, we have a 35% lot coverage. If that driveway remained, there would be 42.47% lot coverage, which was over the maximum. We therefore removed it so that we would not be requesting a variance from the board. Mr. Calley also indicated there were two pre-existing conditions, the, that are pre-existing non-conforming or pre-existing questionably non-conforming. The first one is the front yard setback, where the ordinance requires 25 feet off of Elmwood Drive. We have 10.57 feet. The other is for the rear yard setback, where we are required to have 20 feet. We have 24.72 feet to the back of the house. We only have 18.6 feet to the deck. Again, I'm not certain if that then is a variance that's required or not. If it is a variance and we requested, you would consider approving it. Also then, relative to the building height, we had just indicated one-and-a-half stories existing without the height on it. The architect had gone out and done some measurements on it, and the building height is 17 foot 3 inches, again, significantly under what the ordinance permits. When we go then to the next sheets in the application, there is a soil erosion and sediment control plan. We understand that this will require Morris County Soil Conservation approval. If the board acts favorably on it, then we will follow up with the application to Morris County Soil Conservation. And then the last sheet is just details for the, for the site. Now, there were a number of reports that were generated that I'd like to quickly go through with you. The first one was a report from the tax assessor confirming that the lot numbers that we proposed were acceptable. The next report was regarding the sanitary sewer details. We have no issue with any of the comments in the report. We'll revise the plans in order to have the, the additional notes and details that was requested by your assistant superintendent. Next was the report from the board engineer. We went through and reviewed this report with his office. I'd like to quickly go through the items with you. Item number one, again, no issue. We agree to that. Number two, if we intend to file by map or deed, our plan is to file the minor subdivision by deed. Item three, the proposed property line should be identified. I forgot to write proposed property line on it. Well, when we revise the plans, I'll add the note that labels it, proposed lot line. The plan should be amended to provide monuments at the intersection of the outside boundaries with the right of right. Reviewing it with the engineer's office, there are already existing survey markers at those two points, so that condition has been satisfied. Item number five, we have the, the approval from the tax assessor. The zoning table will defer to the board as to how that should or shouldn't be revised relative to the variance or not variance for that, the setback, for the deck. Item number seven, the impervious coverage differences, as I, if that additional driveway off of Elmwood was to remain, I went through the, the numbers on that. Again, if it stays, we're at 42.47. With it out, we're at 35%, which then complies. Item eight, there was not any new landscaping that was proposed. Item nine, we will add a note to indicate that that landscape wall will be removed. Item 10, the approximate location of the water service and sanitary for the existing dwelling that should be located. The proposed utility locations are shown on the plan. Let's discuss with my client having a mark out for the water and sewer for the existing dwelling. Once that's done, we will add that to the amended plans. I think that...
Mr. Chairman, any questions? Your members, your professionals, may I have Mr. Smith to make him available to the board at this time?
Mr. Weiser, you have a...
Yeah, Mr. Smith, just two questions. Both are very similar. Page four of our report in the zoning table...
Put there with me for one second. Let me go to page four.
I apologize.
Okay.
Down at the bottom, I just want to make sure that, I heard you correctly in that if we need to correct our report, we can do that. The second to the bottom line for Lot 5.02, we show a minimum rear yard setback of 19.75 feet. Did you say it was 24?
Yes, the, the minimum rear yard setback to the existing dwelling is 24.72 feet.
24.72, okay. And then to the deck is the 18.6?
To the deck, it is 18.60.
Okay. Those are the only questions that, that we had.
Mr. Canjiano, did you have the...
Yeah, on the same topic as the rear deck, but I defer to the board and the, and the planner around this. We, from the code general regulations on wood decks for residential zones, we, we find that it's, it's allowed to approach into the rear yard setback for residential disrepair wood deck. And it's, it requires a 10-foot minimum at 18.6. We didn't think it needed a variance, but I defer to the board and I defer to the planner on that. But our reading of the ordinance, you can think it needed it, so that's why we made that on the plan. So it would comply if, if it was interpreted that that meets the requirement for the, per, per the yard and court section for wood decks. But that was just a note on our part. We don't think it's needed. As far as our letter, we talked about stormwater a moment ago. This has to be reviewed by the township engineer under plot plan. It's subject to the township's newer minor stormwater management regulations, which typically require dry wells. It's at the discretion of his office. We recommend that at a minimum, dry wells be included for the proposed lot because of the increased impervious area, as not to have any negative impact on any adjoining property. So again, Lot 501, we would recommend dry well be, be provided for the roof area of the proposed Lot 501. And then, in the same vein, landscaping, again, mitigates the increased impervious area that this neighborhood's going to see. We recommend a planting plan be provided and plantings be installed on these, particularly on the new lot. I don't see that you're going to be doing much work to the existing lot, but on the proposed Lot 501.
Yeah, along the rear, I'm going to call it the rear property line, the rear line being the one that's opposite Halsey. Behind the existing house there is a very substantial row of evergreens. And then continuing along the back of the new lot, there are some shrubs, not a whole lot, but some. So there was something that separates us from our lot and the people behind us.
Again, I, if there's an opportunity to provide additional landscaping, particularly in the front edge or around the perimeter of the building, that would be a step in the right direction.
Yes. Thank you.
I don't have any other...
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we just looked at, did a double check on the provision for the decks, and we would concur that for the deck, it's 10 feet instead of the 20, so no variance is required. We had taken the position that if it was attached to the building, it was part of the principal structure, but taking a further read of this particular section, we concur.
Just once, you have no objections of if we make it a condition of the resolution that you work with our township professionals on things such as landscaping and drainage and the like to make sure that...
No issue whatsoever.
That is satisfied. All right. Mr. Mathieu, look like you had a question.
Yeah, I have a question. It's actually probably best addressed by Mr. Weiser. So lot five oh-two has two front yards, correct? I mean, obviously because it's a corner lot.
Yes.
Does that mean it has two rear yards as well?
That is a good question, and if you will give me...
Because if it does, the side yard behind the dwelling, existing dwelling is not going to conform.
Yeah, I believe that what the ordinance sets up is if it's a corner lot, you have two front yards and you choose which will be the side and which will be the rear.
Yeah.
I asked Mr. Weiser.
I'm sorry.
I'm kidding.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Gordon's upset, you wanted a traffic report tonight, right Gordon?
We will concur with that, with that every town deals with them differently. We don't... That's fine.
I was just kidding. No, it's fine. Funny, just kidding.
All right, do we have any members of the board have questions, Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you. What is on the property now that's not, doesn't have a house on it? What's there now? Is it grass, is it trees? What's there?
I'm sorry, one more time.
What's on the property that's to the right of the house? Is it grass, is it trees? What's there?
Proposed lot five oh-one.
Yeah, the new proposed lot. What's on there?
Grass and one tree.
There's a lot of grass, there's a tree.
It's not all trees. I guess that's my question then.
I don't believe it is. Our lot on these, Jason. No, our property, Steve, the board that we're filling.
Proposed five oh-one.
Lawn.
Okay. All right, so I...
I'm trying to ask him what was on the lot, Jason.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the one you're going to build a new house on. I was, I'm just concerned for the residents at lot four, six, and seven, who probably had not seen water before. But you said you'd do anything you can to meet the needs for a stormwater runoff. So as long as we hear that, then I guess we're in good shape.
And the good thing is it's still an oversized lot, so the coverage is still well under required, but we're still going to mitigate the stormwater management control.
That's fine. Thanks.
And you're going to work with our professionals, so. Any questions? All right. Any other questions from members of the...
Just something of curiosity. What, what if any contact have you had with the people in lot four? Yeah, that's the adjacent lot.
I have not had any contact with them, that would...
Okay. And I mean, I don't expect you to take responsibility for their lot. It just seems like when, when the lot lines were drawn, that four should have gotten a little bit more here and maybe I would have preferred that we could have had a lot layout which would have been more similar to six, seven than what you're preferring here. Because as it stands now, it seems like we're making it so that four is eternally...
Well, yeah, I mean, they can't get the benefit of our land. They can see an empty void, but it's still not theirs, so it's...
That's a fair comment.
The lot line is where it is unfortunately, but I do see, I do see, I mean, it's not completely identical in the area, but that one is a little bit, stands out a little bit, I suppose.
It does. A lot of the properties, they stand out, and I think that's the concern. The concern of those lots around it, you're putting up a mega construction, so. But that doesn't, I'm just giving you my thoughts.
Any other members of the board of... All right, do you have other witnesses?
Our architect, very briefly, Mr. Chairman, will testify now, Keith Chambers. Again, the structure is right size, there's no relief with the new structure proposed.
There are no members of the public here to ask questions of this prior witness, right?
Our team in the room.
Hearing and seeing none, I just want to make sure.
No, thank you for the record, perfect. So Mr. Chambers will walk you through it. We swear and qualify and will walk you through what we intend to build here, which again conforms on the proposed lot, but we want to show you what it looks like at any rate.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Keith T. Chambers, AIA, it's C-H-A-M-B-E-R-S. My address is P.O. Box 1058, Flemington, New Jersey, oh-eight-eight-two-two. And I've been before this board before. I had my license in nineteen ninety-two and I've testified before many boards, you know, as a licensed architect.
And the license is currently in good standing in St. New Jersey?
Yes, it is in Pennsylvania, and I'm also a licensed building official.
All right. Counselor?
Thank you. So Keith, briefly, would you mind walking the board through the proposed structure on the new lot, which I'll call the interior lot?
If you could take the microphone with you, so...
And the photos were not, these photos were not submitted to an existing structure in Harcyphony that we're mirroring, so when Keith speaks to those, we'll mark those. Matter of fact, maybe we'll mark them now so we don't, unless if you're written there, Keith. Two photos.
The first photo is an existing house that was done that's similar to this in Lake Hiawatha, and this is what we're proposing on this lot. But what I did is I took the photograph, mirrored it, and blew it up so you can see, you know, so it matches to my plan that I submitted, so the garage are on the right. So that's basically what I'm just showing here, the rendering of showing what style type house this was that we're proposing here.
So two color photos, it's the same picture, but the image is mirrored. Mark them collectively as A1 Council, is that okay?
That's fine.
For today's date, okay. A1 Keith, ten-three-twenty-two. And with that, please take it away.
I'm just going to flip it. It's a two-story colonial-style home, two-car garage on the left-hand side, and basically four bedrooms, two-and-a-half bath structure. And then the second page is the elevations which were presented, which as I said, you know, this house has been presented before and approved in Lake Hiawatha, and we're going to be putting it on this lot here. Basically, we comply with the heights and all the requirements for the house.
In your opinion, Keith, it's properly to scale for the lot size proposed on the street?
I feel that, you know, going up and down Halsey Road, they've had some new houses put along there, and this falls right in with those new houses that have been approved.
You indicated it conforms to the height. I proffered before to the board that, or at the planning board for several reasons, one of which is the fact that we have no density issues, no FAR issues here. You can confirm that, right?
That's correct. I mean, we're at, to the mean height of the roof, we're only at twenty-five-seven, which is, you know, a little bit less than ten feet difference than what you're allowed. And all the conforms that we have.
And the structure you designed, once it's dropped onto Mr. Smith's surveying plan, in your expert opinion, it conforms to all of the R4 zone standards relative to setbacks as well?
That's correct.
And no issues with tying in the roof leaders and stormwater runoff to a sewage pit or a storm chamber of some sort?
No.
Or a charge?
No problem. We normally do that anyway for this size roof structure.
Thank you, Keith. Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Chambers is available to any questions you might have.
Actually, I have a, is this being built on a slab or is there a basement?
There is a basement.
All right, are you raising the ground around the basement so that the actual height elevation from the existing land is a bit more than twenty-eight and a half feet?
No, it's based on the mean elevation from the civil engineer surveying plan, so...
From the current, current ground level?
That's correct. We're not bringing in any dirt or anything like that, so...
Because we recently had an application where the house was raised about eight feet.
No, no.
And it was, it was, if you, if you measured it from street level to the peak, it was well over the thirty-five feet.
Yeah, so I mean, even this one, if we measured to the peak, we're still under the thirty-five. We're at like twenty-eight, twenty-nine feet.
Well, your plan says twenty-eight and a half feet from the ground surrounding the house.
Right, right, to the ridge.
And I'm looking at the picture that you put in there of a house that has been raised a few feet from the, from...
Right, well, we have, you know, the normal finished floor elevation, two steps up into the house, and that's what we're going to keep as the finished floor. So we're only two feet lower than the finished floor. We're not going to raise it up eight feet.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to get that on the record. I was just...
We'd have to have, you know, sixteen steps to the front door, which we're not doing.
The case on, the case on Noel Road was a little bit egregious to my way of thinking, so. All right, are the members of the board have any questions of this witness on this testimony? Nothing at all? Any of our professionals have any?
I know that it's not, the ordinance measures the roof height to the mean roof height there approximately. What's the height from the first floor, say, to the ridge? Just approximately.
Oh, you have approximately, I can calculate how many...
I mean, the sheets seem to make it look like it's twenty-eight and a half feet.
Twenty-eight-five is what I did from, that's from the ground, but you subtract two feet, you're...
Okay, and that's to the ridge?
That's to the ridge. I did the twenty-eight-five to the ground.
Twenty-eight-five to the ridge, but also have the twenty-five-seven to the mean.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any members of the public? No. Hearing and seeing none. Seeing no members of the public either.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Keith. Briefly, our project planner, Mr. Chairman, again, we realize the relief is slight, but would like to put some testimony on the record in support of the minor subdivision of the flat.
We like to build the case.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, provide your address for the record, and give the board some background on your licenses, experience, and if you've testified before this board.
Certainly. My name is Alexander Dowerty, last name is D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y, project planner on behalf of McDonough Associates at 101 D'Brothor Avenue, Suite A, Morse Plains. My license is current, good standing, PP, as well as a national ASP certification. My education center, Rutgers Blousing, Masters in City Regional Planning, Concentration Development and Redevelopment Studies, Certification in Public Policy. I testify in this capacity on a weekly basis, and I have testified before this board before.
Okay, thank you.
Alex, before you get going, just a few confirmations. You're familiar with the application pending for the board and all the plans filed and the connection with the application, is that right?
Yes.
You've had a chance to review the code, the master plan, and the board reports?
Certainly.
And you've heard of the testimony this evening that preceded yours?
Yes.
And you've been able to formulate an opinion and conclusions from a planning perspective based upon the sufficiency and merits warranting relief here, is that right?
Yes.
So if you wouldn't mind, please take the board through your analysis.
Certainly. For the board, I do have an exhibit, consists of three pages of map on page one, and then two photos taken earlier today to document conditions of the site and orientation as we talk about this particular property. If you please, the board, I'll pass that out.
Sure, we'll mark this as A2 and counts the three-page, three pages, I think.
Yep.
Three-color page exhibit prepared by John McDonough Associates. It is undated, but will date it today, October third, twenty-twenty-two.
Nice paper. Yes. Spent their stuff. Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Wow, aggressive. So, slide one, if you will, it's really just a representation of the property question outlined of the tax lot here. For artistic purposes, the dotted line will represent an approximation of where the subdivision would be here. And this, this was created through NJDEP's GeoWeb. Slide two, if you will, is more of the aerial view from a drone shot earlier today of the existing dwelling and the oversized lot on discussion today. What I'd like to point out for the board on slide two is that rear driveway, if you will, coming off of Elmwood, as discussed earlier, that is to be removed, and I think it really helps to orientate what we would consider the rear yard, the side yard and/or front yard with the existing driveway coming off of Halsey here where the van and dump truck are. And slide two, I'm sorry, slide three is just an aerial top-down approach of the subject site. It does look heavily vegetated, but if you kind of flip back from slide two and three, it's really just one mature tree really causing that foliage difference as described before. I know we kind of raised that question on the vegetation. On slide two, all the foliage around the perimeter, that is to remain, so we're really just losing that one large mature tree for purposes of photos. Now, as it was articulated earlier today, this evening, the proposed subdivision would create two sized lots here with respect to the R4 zone. We're existing currently right now, this existing lot five on Block three thirteen would be about four thousand two hundred and twelve square feet, or six thousand is required, so about two-point-four percent over, their minimum requirement for the zone. So with respects to that, what we're here for is really interpretation, and interpretation is everything, which I think can be justified under our C1 hardship. For this particular property, as it indicated before, getting rid of that driveway off of Elmwood would help to orientate from the public's perspective that that is our rear yard. So with that being said, as we discussed before, I believe we are in compliance with the rear yard setback as well as our accessory structure in the rear yard. But as it is a corner lot, it is unique here, it is oversized, which the structure is loft existing thereon, given us a unique hardship here the way it's situated on this lot. Elmwood can be considered a front yard, but I think for purposes of the public's perspective, Halsey would be considered our front yard. And with that being said, we would be in compliance with that front yard setback off of Halsey. And if Elmwood were to be considered our side yard, we are also in compliance with the side yard setback. But again, interpretation is everything, so for purposes of the board, I do believe there is some positives for this application and little to no negative detriment to the public of the neighborhood at large. For the positive criteria for the municipal land use law, purpose A, C, E, G, I, and M, I believe we hit that right on the mark. Purpose A being to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which would promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Purpose C, provide adequate light, air, and open space. I believe we do hit that, given that, you know, the orientation, again, interpretation of the definition is everything, but I do think we have the appropriate setbacks in place with that existing lot, with the structure therein. Purpose E, to promote and establish appropriate population densities. That's exactly what we're doing. The zone calls for single-family dwelling, and that's exactly what we're proposing here on a lot that conforms. Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations, variety of uses, agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, with the respective, you know, environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. I believe we do have an appropriate location here for a residential dwelling. Purpose I, to provide for desirable visual environment with, through creative development techniques. And I think as we just saw with the architect's rendering, it's a pretty beautiful building. Purpose N, I believe to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping the land with a view of blessing such costs of development. This is an infill. We are filling that missing two, if you will, in the public realm. This is a residential zone. I think we do meet the intent of the R4 zone, providing a residential dwelling, a single-family dwelling. As we heard, lot area, height, frontage, setbacks, I believe we are fully conforming. I think it's a pretty clean application from a negative standpoint. You know, we have stormwater management in place, reducing that extra driveway. I think we have adequate, you know, safety concerns with circulation in and out of both sites. The new structure would be built to old building and flip with old fire codes here, and I don't think there would be a detriment here. And if we were to consider the interpretations of definitions for setbacks, again, this is a pre-existing structure that's existed in this condition in this neighborhood for quite some time, and with the new proposed lot being that it meets its side yard requirement... And with the new proposed lot, being that it meets its side yard requirements, I, I still believe as a planner, there would be no substantial detriment to the public at large. And with that, I'll conclude, for any cross?
Thank you, Alex.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, would make Mr. Doughty available to any questions you might have?
Stuart, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Canjiano?
No questions, but I just wanted to add, the Harcypony Code does have a template of guides for where you assign rear yards and side yards. And how it is in this quarter lot, it's the narrower frontage, opposite the narrower frontage, which is Halsey Road, is the rear yard. So it is shown correctly.
Very good. Members of the board, have any questions of this witness on this testimony? Mr. Napolitano?
Yeah, just aware of the, what's, what's down, down Elmwood from there is Lake Harcypony Park and, you know, Portray West Little League. What, what's the timeframe for construction and, you know, how many trucks will be there? Will, and any safety, the children going back and forth to the park, just out of, just out of curiosity?
Try to get you the answer to that.
I'm the ladies planner.
What's that?
I'm the ladies planner. Towards the logistics.
Only as I've turned on that street thousands of times for baseball, so I know that right on the corner there, and it's, 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 it's high traffic when we got, you know, a lot of games going on or opening night, you know, and so on. So just want to know timeframe and.
Certainly.
So you can bring back the architect for the.
Exactly. We'll leave Mr. Chambers for that answer.
They're probably going to be four to five months. Okay. Construction time for this. And trucks, it's hard to say at this time, but there'll be, you know, some trucks for deliveries and for excavation, you know, the foundation, but it'd be limited.
Okay. Just, just.
I'll only ask that, Mr. Napolitano, if that's the case, and it's during Little League season, you should contact our police department to have traffic control at that time.
Good. Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
And Keith, just for the benefit of the record and for identification, the applicant is a seasoned developer, is that right?
That's, that's correct. He's, yes, done many projects, seasoned developer, he knows these issues, he deals with the town all the time, and he, you know, knows how to, you know, comply.
It's just a unique spot there on the corner, that's the only way into that park?
Right.
Just, just throwing that out there.
Right.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, any, any questions with the planner on any of the testimony at this time?
So would that be a condition for approval, or? Working with the police department, would that be a condition?
Well, that's, that's normal, though, in the pre-construction meetings, that they would contact the police department. I don't know if you have to put it into this, but that's pretty much what we would do. Because, you know, public safety comes first, but usually in pre-construction meetings, they talk about police and about policing itself.
That, that is a particularly sensitive corner there.
It is. But if you want to make it a condition, that's.
Well, that they, they remark to the police that, you know, in the pre-construction meetings, that it be remarked on in some way, that they be. Sure.
Wanted to say that I understand, you know, the, the Little League and that corner is bad, but we're not doing anything with that house on the corner, it's next to it.
Right.
You know, it's not per se on that drive that goes to the, the Little League field. And we'll do our best to stay away from that.
I, I think we're just, we just want to make sure the police are aware of it, and they'll let you know if there are any issues to be dealt with.
Right.
So.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else have any questions at either end here? I think, I guess that's it at this point. Is that your?
That is, that is all we have, Mr. Chairman. Very simple, appreciable minor subdivision with, with little to possibly no relief for the fully conforming new lot proposed. That's all we have for you folks.
And again, we've got no members of the public that I see here. If you're here and you want to speak up, I don't, I don't hear any, anybody or see any hands raised. I guess that closes the evidentiary portion of this hearing at this time. Is there anybody that wishes to discuss this case, or do we want to move a resolution? Do I have a volunteer to frame a resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Didich.
Motion to approve application number 22.530, Alpha Investment LLC, 304 LC Road, Block 313, Lot 5, finer site plan for a two-lot subdivision with C variance.
Second meeting. Are there any conditions to that? Do we discuss any that you caught, counselor?
The applicant agreed that they would work with the township professionals with respect to stormwater management and landscaping.
Okay, we're going to take a moment's rest, or, we're going to hold the meeting for a moment.
Figure out why.
Just a brief recess at 9:05.
Yes. Exactly.
I've worked with everybody too hard, everybody's been sticking with it. Agreed. The order. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Yes.
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Your math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stansio.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here. All right, we were discussing the conditions of the approval here. So counselor?
The only notes that I had were that the applicant agreed to work with township professionals regarding stormwater management and landscaping. And then we did, there was a discussion about working with the police department as necessary.
All right, so that's the nature of your motion and second?
I had seconded it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Based on those conditions, yes.
Good. Thank you. So Nora, would you call the, the vote, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Stansio.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight, folks.
Certainly. Well, that certainly went faster than I expected. Can I fill out? Yep. Want to talk about the schedule for 2023 tonight or not? Um.
We already approved it, but if you want to talk about it.
Oh, no, we approved the motion. When I was going. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I hate to be that, I hate to be that guy, I have a question. So, I was, I was at Target the other night, and I could have sworn we asked them to put stop signs in where they're putting their new, their pickup spots, there's six of them, 2020. So, of course, I went back and looked at the RR notes, says, "Based upon question from the board, applicant will consider placement of either a yield to pedestrian or stop sign in the area of pedestrian crosswalks proximate to the rapid pickup lanes." I didn't notice them there.
Did we make it a condition of the approval on?
It's just, it's just as based upon the questioning applicant will consider the placement, so.
Yeah.
Does that mean they're putting it there, or they just?
No, that means they'll consider it.
So they didn't do it, okay. All right.
You know, if they, if they look at it and say, you know, maybe we should put, eh, no.
Okay, so in the future, we have to get it in writing that they will do it, as opposed to saying they'll consider it. Is that right?
Yes.
It has to be in writing that they will do it in the resolution.
Okay, that's it, sorry. I made a.
No, no, but it's, it's a fair question. Anything else that needs to come before the board at this time, or do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I hear a motion. I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor of the. Anybody else who's opposed can stay here.